Good evening, everyone. Welcome, welcome. Welcome to Talks with Tanya. Hi. Hi, thanks for joining. Thanks for joining on this beautiful Sunday afternoon. I was feeling a little, I was feeling a little bit of cool weather out there even today. I think fall is almost here. Fall is almost here for us. Now you know what I'm doing. I have to check over here to make sure that we are live everywhere we need to be. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for joining me this evening, everyone. Hi. Thanks for joining. Great. I know, I know. I was, I was, I was taking a little vacation. Yes, I could do that. Took a little vacation and I am back ready to kick off for the, for the rest of the year. Thanks so very much for joining me. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Tanya Bain and I am your host here and producer of Talks with Tanya. And Talks with Tanya is about educating, informing, impacting and connecting by sharing information to really bridge the gap, getting you information that you need so that we are all together marching towards whole life success. And one of the things I do like to say is that we need to be sure that we are using every tool and every piece of wisdom that we have acquired on this journey. And all those lessons that we have learned, the books that we've read, the lives that we've watched, the experiences, whether they were high or low, all that information so that you can move forward to the best, your next and your best. And today, you know how I'm talking about since the beginning of the year, I've been talking about how it is time. It is time. And at the time, I wasn't quite sure. This was, you know, pre-public COVID. Because that's a whole nother show. And I just wanted to know, I just had this feeling that, you know, something was coming. And there've been so many of those things. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to the first responders who are continuing to, you know, stand strong and move forward and helping us get through this COVID-19. Just because people aren't talking about it doesn't mean it is not going down. Just because Black Lives Matter are not at the top of your feet anymore doesn't mean that black lives don't matter. This is exactly what some folks have been waiting for, okay? Waiting for when it's not at the top of the news so that they can continue business as usual. But that's not what it's about. It is about doing something. Because if you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem. I still yell "love you" but you are part of the problem. Two things I really need to remind you about. Number one, you already know, vote, 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 okay? We're encouraging you to go out, go ahead and vote by mail. Make sure that you're connecting with your Bureau of Elections, all right? And watching the dates and the times about, you know, when it is that you can vote by mail. The instructions are right out of the Board of Elections, no matter what county that you're in, all right? And fill out the census, you know, fill out the census. It's about making sure that your community is getting the funds that it needs from the taxes that you've paid, okay? Because not only do you pay the taxes, you need to report in the census that, hey, I'm over here and this is what we need in our community. Yes, beloved, I have some comments already. Yes, thank you. Someone said I had to educate one of my white friends on Black Lives Matter today. It's an ongoing thing. It's not just, you know, one person. It's now a way of life for us. It is now a way of life for us. And, you know, that old discussion about all lives matter. Yeah, all lives do matter, but black lives matter, okay? Because they are, they are the other lives, okay, are not being killed at the rate that we are. But that's not what we're here about. Because you know I can go on and on. I am welcome. Welcome, Kenya. Thanks for joining. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, Ms. Val. Thanks for joining. Oh, she's coming on soon. Her book has arrived. I know it came in today. But I do want to take the opportunity to bring on today's guest. I am really extremely honored to have Mr. Trippie Congo on with us today. And I'm going to just go ahead and bring him right up here. Let me just, you know, I'm my own co-pilot too. So here we go. Mr. Congo coming up on the floor. Hi, Mr. Congo. How are you?
How you doing, Tanya? Thanks for having me.
Awesome. I'm really honored. I really appreciate you taking the time to come and share a little bit on Talks with Tanya. You know, you heard what we do here. It's about educating and informing. And I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to introduce the world of Talks with Tanya to you. And especially in a day like today, in the climate that we find ourselves, it's so important to have leaders like you, okay? Who are standing up and speaking up for us. But let me just share briefly a little bit about you. Mr. Ernest Trippie Congo is stepping up, I'm gonna say again, to help us with restoring integrity through effective leadership. You know, we could talk about integrity all day and night and how about seeing that often. But I do want to let you know that he is running for Wilmington City Council President. Okay, in a time like this. Trippie believes that Wilmington's leadership really needs to focus on some key areas, workforce development, employment and housing, education, public safety, and the overall health and wellness of Wilmington's residents and business and city employees. Yes, yes, yes. Trippie was re-elected in November 2016 as the City Council member from the second district. He is one of those rare breeds among us. He is a native Wilmingtonan, you know? But those of us who have been in Delaware from someplace else a long time, we don't find very many native Wilmingtonans that are here. He is a graduate of the illustrious Delaware State University where he received his Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration. And then following in the footsteps of his father and his mother, he graduated from the American Academy McAllister Institute of Funeral Services. And after past national boards, he moved into the role of running the family funeral business. Trippie has been recognized by the News Journal for his Student of the Week Youth Motivational Program. I love that. He is a past board member of the Delaware Adolescents Program, Inc., DAPY, which supports and educates pregnant teens and their families. He's also a member of the Beautiful Gate Outreach Center and he has a host of local memberships, you know, where he just stands strong in our community. So welcome, Trippie, to Talks with Tanya.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya. I mean, I don't know what else to say now. It's great being here and I thank you for everything that you're doing for our community and just for inspiring people. I was just back in the green room, just listening to your opening and I was just like, wow, this is what we really need. I mean, I know we need people in leadership positions, but I mean, what you're doing on an everyday basis is touching lives and helping people to, you know, become more positive and have faith in themselves is awesome. And I think that just is, it goes far above and beyond what any elected official could ever do. So keep up the, keep up the great work.
Well, I am honored to stand alongside of you. You know, we are in a crucial time. You know, we look at, you know, you can look at it globally, okay? And it looks so large, right? And then we look at it nationally and we get pressed, okay? But I have, on more than one occasion, talked about how important it is to start locally. So can you tell us about what motivated you to become a member, run for City Council in the beginning of all of this?
I was never really into politics, honestly. I just, my family comes from a, like I've always served the community. My family has always stressed the importance of giving back and helping and bringing people along and just thanking the community for everything, all the trust that they have put in us throughout the years. So it was just, it just came naturally, honestly, because I wanted to help on another level. And I love the city of Wilmington. Like you mentioned, I was born and raised here. My family is here. My family business is here. And I'll be here for the rest of my life. And I just, and I knew that getting involved politically would just help Wilmington become
Welcome.
A better, a better city. So I just wanted to help, I wanted to continue to help people by just doing on a different level.
Absolutely. And we appreciate you, we appreciate you for that. It is a rare thing for us to see a black man, okay, in a leadership role and who is standing strong and really stepping up. So can you tell me about why becoming Wilmington City Council President is so important to you?
It's extremely important because over the last four years, our leadership just wasn't going in the direction that council wanted and nor that the community wanted. You know, there's been a lot of contention and we were seen as being very dysfunctional. And I want to fix that. And I want to bring back unity to council. And I want us to be viewed by the people we serve as being respectful and honest and again with integrity. And that was my main reason for running, honestly. It was just because the last four years had just, they've been hard for council members. They've been hard for council staff. And they've been hard for our community, you know, in which we're supposed to serve, who we're supposed to be serving. So I just, I wanted to, and I couldn't just turn a blind eye to it. And I just, something deep within just pulled me like, it was just time for me to step up. When people have been wanting me to run for president and actually the mayor, but I was like, no, that's not me. As long as I'm there and, you know, as long as I can help, I just want to be a part of a productive team. But the last four years, you showed, they, you know, showed council and it showed our city and the like that I just wasn't proud of. So I said, like, I think you mentioned it, you know, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And I didn't want to remain silent and be looked as part of the problem. So I decided to run for City Council President.
And in doing so, what is your platform for making that change? Making that shift so that the citizens of Wilmington are first?
First, I want to just change the way council works internally. And I think that's going to go a long way for bringing like harmony between council members. And once we're fixed internally, I believe, well, I know that we'll be able to address. Well, first, we'll be able to listen to our community and then we'll be able to address a lot of, all of their concerns. Once we're, we're not always going to agree, but I just think that my, under my leadership style, it will be a cohesive one. It will be one that respects all council members equally. I'll be the president, but I will respect and I will engage. I will allow all, all council members to be fully engaged and to participate in the, in the council process of how we govern ourselves. And I think that, I know that's going to go a long way. And again, once we do that, we'll be able to, to come together and just address, you know, a lot of the ills that are plaguing Wilmington, that are plaguing, you know, plaguing our state. And like you mentioned earlier, which is a microcosm of what's going on in the world. But I believe that under my leadership, we'll be able to address those problems head on.
So let's talk about it because on Talks with Tanya, we talk about it, okay?
I'm ready. I'm ready.
So what do you view like as the places for you to start to, to make those changes? I think it's amazing that you're looking at the leadership because when there are issues and we see that nationally and globally, it is the leadership. So we've got that under wraps. What about for people? Tell me about what you have for the people.
You know, our people are hurting. And if we're honest with ourselves and especially in politics, I believe that we have, we have, we have failed, honestly. You know, I could sit up here and I can tell you what I've done in the second district over the last 12 years and council members, we can all say what we've done. But have we done enough? And are we still, are we still having the same discussions and the same conversations that we've had for decades? And I believe that we are. So I know that it's time to really aggressively and proactively address some of the ills of Wilmington. You know, public education is, is one of my passions. Making sure that our seniors are well taken care of and they're, they know that we're going to have them in a safe place, in a safe environment. Economic development, we really need to make sure that our businesses are thriving with a diverse and robust workforce. And, and I think that once we're able to address some issues that we're, a lot of times, I just, let me give you a little bit of history.
Yes.
Wilmington City Council, our main task is to legislate. If we see something that needs, like locally, but we have never been allowed to be at the table when it comes to how our children are educated. And we've never been allowed to be at the table about how we need, how our prisons need reform. We've never been allowed to be at the table when we're talking about our judicial system. So I want to, along with, you know, my colleagues, to really begin to have those conversations that we haven't had since I've been on council. We've always kind of accepted the role that, you know, that's a state issue or that's a county. But I want to address, because I think that we're in a moment right now where we actually are letting our community and letting our people lead the way and tell us, you know, kind of giving us our marching orders. And I think it's important to capture this momentum and really start to just have a conversation that, that will eventually cure so many of our ills in Wilmington.
I think that's important. One of our comments from, hey, Val Mandisa Karisi. She said, "It's great to see one who looks, someone who looks like me making a change in government." And she wishes you great success. And we have a couple of questions. Yes. Okay, from Diane Blackwell. Hey Diane, she says Wilmington has done a great job with revitalization. What, but what about the youth, crime on crime, you know? And that's something that's across the nation. Where do you see City Council's role in making a change on that?
First, we have to realize that we can't legislate our way out of crime and we can't police our way out of crime. We really have to take a look at like the core reasons of crime. A lot of time that's poverty. So we really have to address poverty. So so many times we want, our community just wants more police officers. But that, that's like that, the police, police department can't change someone's mentality. Crime usually is, is, is a method of survival. So we have to begin to develop a workforce. We have to begin to develop children who are educated to the full, to the maximum capacity. And it's not, it's not a quick fix. And I know that that's what people want to hear, but that's just not my style. I'm not going to tell you what you want to hear. I'm going to tell you what I believe. I'm going to listen to you. But I'm also going to tell you what I believe are just the core symptoms, the core reasons behind like the symptoms of crime. Like children don't want to grow up. They don't, they don't have, they don't aspire to be criminals. Sometimes because of the broken family structure, because of our broken school systems, because of our broken neighborhoods, they're forced into crime. And I believe that we just have to take a look at how we're educating and how we're, you know, keeping our, obtaining our neighborhoods. And I believe that will eventually, I know that will eventually decrease crime. But it's not the police, unfortunately. Police, police play a key role, but I think that's an unfair burden to place on a, a police department that they have to eliminate crime because it's impossible. And if they could, I think they would have done it by now. But we just, we're looking for the quick fix instead of looking at some of the fundamental issues that are, that are causing the crime.
Right, right, right. So from a local perspective, how do you, you know, how do you do that? What are the, the elements that help us address those, the root cause, as we would say in corporate America, of those issues?
You know, we just have to be, we have to be able to, we have to be able to collaborate. Like council can't do it alone. Government can't do it alone. We have to be able to, to listen to our, to our communities. We have, and we have, everybody has to be on the same page. And the council could have our own reasons, but unless we're listening to the community, I think we're just kind of, you know, spinning our tires. The community has to be involved, the business, the business community has to be involved and government has to be involved. And, and no, one sector can't do it alone. So I just think that we have to come, you know, first of all, I think we have to be, you know, humble ourselves and realize that we haven't done what we're supposed to have done. And that, that'd go a long way because again, I think especially in government, everybody always wants to get re-elected. So all we do is kind of, you know, try to uplift ourselves and, and make the public believe why we should be re-elected. But that, that's, that's, that hasn't worked. So we really just have to, again, just humble ourselves and, and have, have open and honest conversations to, to educating our children, to creating a workforce that is going to be capable of, of, of growing our city. You know, our businesses are vital. And, and if we're not preparing our, our, our young adults to, to, to move into, to our workforce, you know, I think that we're, we're missing the point. So again, it's, it's, no, it, there's so much involved, but we just have to, we just have to kind of let ourselves be exposed and, and come up with some, and talk about some real solutions without, you know, with, without trying to tear each other down. Right. You know, like whether it's council, whether it's the administration, the mayor, whether it's our, our state legislation, we always try to kind of pass the buck or, you know, say it's their fault. It's not our fault. But, but together, we have to really come up with some solutions. And, and until we do that, I just don't see how we can, we can move forward, move Wilmington forward.
So what I hear you very clearly saying is that let's change the focus, you know, about fault it is and that energy into, into solutions.
Right. We always talk about, like, it's, it's kind of a buzzword to always talk about reform, but we never talk about political reform. We, we need political reform in, in the city of Wilmington. And I will, and I, once I'm council president, I'm going to, I'm going to, along with my council members, like we're going to, we're going to push that envelope. And I just think, I just know that's, that's the way that we, I, I, I think that's the, that's the direction that we need to go.
It's like looking at ourselves first and, you know, from a leadership position, what is our part in this?
Right, right.
Looking at what is our part in this? When you're out in your community.
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, our, our greatest part is, is again, listening. I think so many times we get caught up in what we think, like I might be wrong. I don't have all the answers, but I do know that what we're doing right now isn't working. So I think we just have to, you know, pivot and do things a lot differently.
So from, from the position of President of City Council, can you give us an idea, you know, of the, I guess, the areas that you want to target in order to make some of those changes?
Yes, yes, that's, that's a great question. Probably the, the one that I always talk about first is, is public education. Anybody who knows me knows my family and just, kind of just knows, especially just knows me, knows that I am a, an education advocate. And I believe that so many of our ills can be solved through education. And when I say that, I mean, a public education system that will now teach our children how to love each other and teach our children how to handle their finances and teach our children how important their credit is and teach our children about home ownership and how that builds generational wealth. And teach our children about how to love your neighbors and how to love strangers. We really have to look at the curriculum and, and change it. And we have, and this is, this has to start at kindergarten, maybe even daycare. So that we're bringing up young adults and, and, and we're bringing up children and adults who just know how to take care of ourselves and how to take care of our families and how to take care of each other. We have to really address our family structure. And we have to talk about the, the importance of fatherhood. And, and these conversations aren't always easy, but as leaders, it doesn't always have to be political to me. It, we have to talk about politics, but some of it is just about being human and how we're all connected. And, and it just has to be ingrained in us and, and from first grade to 12th grade and what, 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 I think we'll just develop people, not only workforce, but we'll, we'll develop a better, a better people and a better population. After education, because I think, I just think that so much leads, leads from, you know, comes from education. I think crime will be reduced, you know, our business community will be enhanced because we're preparing a workforce that is ready and that is ready to take on tomorrow's challenges. And, and again, we just, we have to make sure that we're taking care of our seniors. You know, I was chair of the Health, Aging and Disability Committee meeting, I mean, committee. And through that, I was able to engage our senior population. And they had a lot of concerns about, you know, the, we have several senior high rises in Wilmington. And none of them are owned by the city of Wilmington. A lot of them are, well, most of them are privately owned. Some of them are owned by the Wilmington Housing Authority. But throughout the city, there was one common theme is that the seniors didn't feel safe. They didn't feel respected and they didn't feel valued. So I was able to let them come to a, to a public, a public meeting and they just talked about whatever was on their mind. That's the first time that, that had ever happened in the city council. And through those conversations, now, one of the high rises, they're, they are investing nine and a half million dollars into renovating that high rise and into upgrading the facilities and to providing security. And one of the common themes is the elevators were never working. Pretty much whatever high rise you went to, the elevators were, you know, seniors were getting stuck on them. So they, they didn't feel safe. They would rather walk up or down 10 floors. Sometimes they couldn't. They just had to remain in their rooms because the elevators weren't working, weren't working. And they didn't feel safe. So, I mean, like council didn't directly, couldn't directly fix that problem. But we addressed it. We allowed the seniors to, to bring attention to it. So the powers that be, they heard us. And now, you know, I'm just proud to say that I was able to be a part of that change. And a lot of, a lot of that, a lot of what I talk about is, I think, just council giving the community a voice so that they're, they're not silenced and that those who can make the changes are aware that, you know, we're, we're not going to be silent because silence, you know, sometimes silence means acceptance. So a part of us is just letting our community have a voice.
Absolutely, because if you're not being listened to, then you're less likely to be part of the solution. And, um, that's where we become complacent. You know, that's how we become complacent. I hear you talking about, um, partnerships. Um, I remember Wilmington, um, that was, um, you know, a thriving place for business. You know, um, as a small business, uh, person, what do you see as, um, the role of city council and, um, businesses in the, um, in the movement forward for, for Wilmington?
Yes, thank you. I think it's critical that city council, like you said, does have relationships with different nonprofits, with different organizations who are preparing a workforce for our business community. Our, our business community is vital to the survival and to the success of Wilmington. Without businesses, there is no Wilmington. So that's critical. But business, those businesses have to sometimes reinvest in, into our communities. And our communities have to patronize those businesses. It is, it's critical that, that we as Wilmington, as we as Wilmingtonans know how important it is to patronize and to support our local business community. Of course, we want to go to the malls. Of course, we want to go to, you know, Philadelphia and Jersey and DC. But it's important that we spend money right here at home. And, and through those relationships and, and, and through recognizing how we're important to businesses and businesses are important to the community, I think that we both win. And, and through, through council supporting those nonprofits and different organizations, uh, uh, that will prepare our workforce, I think that the business, the businesses win, our communities win, and, and the city of Wilmington wins.
Mm-hmm. It seems to have been an ongoing thing and you're absolutely right. I remember, um, you know, I used to work downtown in Wilmington, like the Tattinol. And, um, you know, I remember, you know, walking up and down, uh, Market Street, okay, to get lunch and really to buy anything, you know, that I needed. And, um, you know, even though, um, you know, business changes and the population changes, Wilmington is beautiful, uh, and really, you know, it's a thriving, it's a thriving community. Um, when you talk about, um, you know, growing the businesses, um, and, and having that kind of, um, of partnership, what role does, uh, city council have in terms of, um, like urban planning and so forth?
Yes, we, we're, we're vital to urban planning. And I, I think our, our biggest, our, our biggest area to being so vital is, again, our, our residents. Um, city council does not have all the answers. And I think that we'd be foolish to, to think that we can move our city in the, in the direction that it needs to go without just input from, from our community. Um, but again, around urban planning, like we need to realize how important our neighborhoods are and how, how important the people, not only, not only the look of our neighborhoods, but like the foundation of the people in our neighborhoods. So, and, you know, it's one thing to build up, uh, you know, to, to improve the facades of, of businesses in the neighborhoods and, and to make them look pretty and to, um, be a very attractive. But unless we are also developing, developing the people who want to work there, the people who want to live there, I think it's all in vain. So we really have to, like my, I guess my biggest thing is just investing in people. And we just sometimes, like, we may have to, you know, redirect some of our funding that has gone, uh, you know, to, to consultants and has gone outside of the city. We really have to be able to, to just develop people. And that, that's just my, my passion. My passion is people. And, you know, like, sometimes I get caught up in just talking about people. They're like, Trippi, you gotta talk about everything. But I just think that everything will be worked out once we just focus on building a better, um, population of, of, of Wilmington. And that's just our people, the people who have been neglected, the people who have been denied, and the people who just, who haven't been given access to opportunity. And, and once we level that playing field and once we're really ready to have those conversations with, with those who are also at the table, along with the community, because the community plays a huge role in this. A lot of times when, once we were elected, people kind of sit back and say, okay, um, go, go do it. But it's, that's, um, it's impossible for us to be this change. And it's impossible for us to bring about this systemic change that we desperately need, not only, uh, in our city, but in our, you know, in our country, without a population that's supporting us, that's going with us when we have to go and have these, these, um, these conversations with our delegation in Dover. So, like, so, so really it's just, it's people, and the media plays a huge role in this too. Um, that's why I'm glad to, to, you know, it was so, it was just so refreshing when I, when I heard your intro. Because media sells, they try, a lot of time they just want to sell a story. They just want to sell negativity. So we have to be able to support programs like yours and media outlets like yours who are just not, you know, who just don't want to talk about the doom and gloom. Who just don't want to put, you know, our, our communities, our neglected, um, people in, in, on the front page all the time. I mean, it's, every time you hear about a homicide, it's front page. But when you hear about, you know, a, a child getting, uh, you know, getting, maybe she skipped third grade or, you know, went straight to high school from 11th grade or graduated from college with, uh, you know, a four point oh, that doesn't always make the front page. So we really have to be, like, we have to hold our media accountable to promoting Wilmington and to, and to promoting, um, you know, people who, who make up Wilmington in, in a better light. And I think that would go a long way, um, to, you know, and seeing how other states view, view our city and how we view our city ourselves. Like, if you ask, sometimes if you ask the a- the average person, they'll, they're, they're so tied into, you know, the media and, and the negativity around it, they're not saying how wonderful Wilmington is because they don't see it and they don't read about it. But I, I think it's important that we, we hold our media accountable to telling the, the full story of, of Wilmington.
I think that's absolutely positively true. And thank you, because that's what Talk With Tanya is about. And there's so many others like myself, you know? It's about what is really happening and let's, you know, let's talk about it. You know, uh, there is, um, we, what, what I hear you saying is that we need to change the narrative.
Exactly, exactly.
Change the narrative.
Right.
You know? Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, absolutely exactly. You know, I think it's so commendable, um, for, um, a young man like yourself, really, to take the risk.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yes, it is, and I understand that. But it's, it's a risk that's well, well worth it. Because, again, I just couldn't sit by and let our council, let our city, um, kind of go, you know, go through what we went through for the last four years. So I, I know it's risky and, um, but, but it's worth it. And I could, because I love, I love my city, I love the people in the city. And I just want to be able to, to, you know, when I close my eyes, when I, or when I move on from politics, I want to be able to bring up another generation of, 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 of young politicians who are prepared to take on this kind of responsibility. And again, I, I think we as politicians, we get, we get caught up being politicians. And we're not ready to, you know, bring up that next generation. But that, that's critical, uh, because I, I don't want to do this forever, honestly. I love it, but I, I know how important it is to bring up the next generation. I know how important it is to, to make sure that we're, that we are able to develop people who can, 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 can carry the torch. And, and I think that's just, that's, you know, that's, that's where, I, that's what I want my legacy to be. Not that I was a career politician, but I just helped along the way. And it's really not about me, it's just about the city of Wilmington and, and, you know, what we all can do for it.
Yes, you, you made a couple of very key points there. And, and what I hear in that, you know, um, you talked about having to make some systemic changes. You know, uh, not business as usual, um, anymore. Um, let me ask you this, with your, um, your colleagues, um, in city council, um, how are they feeling about the direction of the city now?
The city or, or city council, like the city as a whole?
City council, yes. In city council, what mindset there? What is the mindset in city council that kind of, it sounds like we're a little bit stuck?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Um, there's just, we, we're, we're a frustrated city council. Um, and again, I, I want to, that's, and that's why I'm running, because I want to, I want to heal our council. And I, and through that, I think we heal our city. And that doesn't, that, that's, that's just, that's, I, I don't want to seem like I'm just like some magician who just comes in and waves his wand and everything is better. But I just know that my, under my leadership and my, under my leadership, I will bring a healing to council. And anybody who has been familiar with council over the last four years, really, he knows, knows that we need a lot of healing. And day one, I heal council because of my way that I'm going to allow, again, allow every council member to fully participate. And that's the way that it's, it's meant to be. Like our charter says, uh, you know, all council members shall decide, decide how council governs itself. And, you know, it doesn't say the president. And I think that's the misconception. And, and honestly, it was my misunderstanding that the council, that the president kind of ruled council. And they made all the, all the major decisions and, and they decided how we function internally. Um, but when I, uh, you know, when I learned the charter better and I learned that all council is supposed to have a, a say in it. And once we were denied that, that, um, you know, that, that power and that, and, um, and denied our, our given rights, you know, it was just, we became a frustrated council. And we, we, and through that, it just seemed like all we did, you know, all we did was, was argue. Uh, but honestly, like, our pre- our current president didn't put together a strong agenda for us to be able to make some of the systemic changes that I want to make. And I'm gonna, um, and I'm gonna do that. Like, healing council is easy because it's just about following the rules. But after that, now we're gonna really address some of these systemic changes that, that we, that we need to talk about. Uh, so it's not, again, it's not, uh, it's, I don't want to make it seem like it's a quick fix, but it, it's a conversation that is long overdue. And it's a conversation that, that I, I know that all council members want to be a part of. You know, and, and I know our community wants that and deserves that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And you know, I hear your approach one as, um, restorative. And I see that, um, on your platform, um, you know, about having that restorative approach, um, to the, um, to the issues. One of those issues is about health, okay? Um, you know, in the, you know, in the city of Wilmington, what do you see as the, um, the direction that we really need to go, um, with regard to health?
Um, we, we need to, again, COVID has brought, has brought to light and has reminded us about the health disparities that we're facing as a nation and that, you know, we're faced as a city. So we need to, you know, post-COVID, we need to have the conversations around how we address those disparities and how we, how we make our, how we allow our population to have more access to healthcare. And, and again, I think that is just through, a lot of that is just through making resources available. We have so many food deserts within our, within our city where, you know, the community has to go to the local store to get their groceries. And that local store doesn't always provide the healthiest options. So we have to, we have to make resources available where our, our children and our young adults and our seniors and our families are able to go, uh, you know, to the corner store and get, you know, organic produce. And, and, uh, they're able to get some, you know, uh, you know, food and, and groceries that are going to benefit, um, them in the long term. You know, we, we know, especially, especially, you know, our, our black and brown community. We, you know, we suffer from high blood pressure and we suffer from, from diabetes and, and so many food-related illnesses. So we have to take a look at that and realize and, and take a look at what we're feeding our children in school. And, and take a look at, you know, some of our children only go to ha- only have a physical, physical education one, one day a week. Or they may only have it one semester out of the year. So those, those are the kind of conversations that we need to have and we really need to address. I have so many, so many, uh, friends who are in, in education and they tell me these things. They tell me how, um, you know, they, they might see their student one day a week or once, once, once every two weeks or, or once, you know, a block of students will have physical education, uh, you know, for three months and they won't have it for the rest of the year. And, and that's what we need to address, we need to address. And we also need to address our, our mental health. Uh, so, so many, so ma- so many times we talk about our physical health, but mental health is extremely important. And, you know, as a, you know, as a young black man, a lot of times I, you know, we don't, we don't want to admit that we may have, we, we, we may be under mental duress. And, and that, and that can destroy us, it can have an effect on our children and our, and our families and our neighborhoods. So we have to, you know, we have to have that conversation that, you know, it's okay to, to ask for help and it's okay not to be okay. And we have to take that stigma away from, um, you know, mental health, meaning that it means that you're crazy and that, um, that you can't be helped. We, we have to, we have to be, we have to feel comfortable, you know, accepting people where they are and, and accepting the fact that, you know, people need help. And it's okay to ask for help. So, you know, it's physical health and, and it's mental health. Um, and another thing that I really want to address is substance abuse. Uh, because in Delaware right now, there are no long-term rehabilitation centers. You know, if, if someone in our family, if someone in our, in our, you know, our, our immediate, you know, some of our friends, if they want to get help, long-term help, they have to go out of ten, out of state. So we have to begin to realize how, how we have to have those kind of resources right here at home and how much of a benefit that could be. You know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of different organizations who are doing a great job, you know, with, with rehabilitation, but none of them are long-term. And a lot of our people, they need that long-term help to, to, uh, those long, that long-term, those long-term centers to, to really, um, help themselves and, and to, and to get over their substance, substance abuse. So we, we have to invest and we have to make sure that those kind of rehabilitation centers are right here in, in Delaware.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. This is absolute, I mean, this is so refreshing. Um, it is so refreshing, um, to have, uh, someone representing the community that has a heart for the people, okay? That cares about the neighborhood, that understands and will, will no longer tolerate, um, you know, business as usual, um, and, um, I'm gonna say my words, gluttons for, um, for power. Because from my perspective, um, that's what I see.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's, those are facts, those are facts.
That's what I see and it's discouraging to our community. So, you know, um, I just want to, um, you know, um, acknowledge, uh, that you have your heart in the right place, okay? Uh, you have your heart in the right place, um, and it's for the people.
Oh, ab- absolutely, absolutely for the people, yes.
Is for the people. Um, and this is an old adage, but if you always do what you always done, you'll always get what you always got.
Right, and that's, and that's, and honestly, that's where we are politically. And that's why I said, you know, above else, above all else, we need political reform. Um, because with that, it, it brings about change in, in everything else. It brings about change in our school systems, it brings about change in our judicial systems, it brings about change in our healthcare system. Because we're able to have those conversations with those different groups of, 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 of people. And we're able to be influencers and we're able to, along with the community, make those changes. So we, we really have to, above all else, again, just have political reform. And, and I think after that, everything else kind of falls in place with the help of the community. Like, we can't, we can't do a virus levels, but we, we, we're gonna need the, the community to continue to support us and, and we'll support them.
Yes, yes, yes. So, um, oh, we've got, wait, we got a little shout out. We have some thank you, Trippi, for caring about the people in the communities. About the people in the communities.
Thank you, thank you.
What is needed in the communities in Wilmington. That is absolutely, absolutely true. Um, personally, and I and I can say this for, um, the people that I interact with as well. We are sick and tired, okay, of the crap, okay?
And we have, we, exactly, we have to take, we have to take advantage of of how you're feeling. And that and that's how Wilmington is feeling. That's how this this country is feeling, that we're we're sick and tired of it. We have to go about it in a way that is constructive, that is nonviolent, but that is, is, it's gonna be steadfast. And and it's not gonna take no for an answer. So, I wanna be a part of that. You know, when we had the local, uh, protests here in Wilmington, I was right there with them. You know, things kinda went to the left, you know, I didn't agree with that part, but I I know why it happened and I understand why. Like, why, why the protesters were here and and we need that same kind of momentum. We need that same kind of energy. To make these changes because, like, truth be told, that's when government really started to listen. When, like locally, was when we, like, when the people here protested. And again, again, I don't I don't agree with the with the destruction of the property part, but that or that, those or those organizations, that organization. And that momentum and that resistance to the system that you just talked about. It opened up our our local, um, government's ears. So we have to, like, it's just imperative, it's imperative that we continue and that you compete, that that's why, that's why I was saying how important it is for the community. To still have that same kind of energy, positive energy, like you just mentioned. And and if we, once, once, you know, once that, once that community tells us that they're still ready to push forward. We're right on side, you know, us in in as elected officials are right on side, right alongside with them. You know, pushing for that, those kind of changes that that the community wants.
So when you're talking about that, one of the questions is, um. How can, um, city council, um. Representatives make changes if they do not have the power to negotiate for that?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And and that's.
Go ahead.
I believe, honestly, I believe that's almost intentional. Because why would we have, like, why would government even be set up? In a way where those of us on council and those of us who have direct relationships with the community. And, you know, we're we're known as the part of government with our, you know, our boots on the ground. Like, why would we, as a, as a governing body, not be able to have those kind of, not be able to have that kind of influence? On how our children are raised, on how our incarcerated, uh, population is is treated. Inside and outside, like, why, like, why wouldn't we? And I, and I, and that's where we are now, but again, I think the question was how? The answer is with, along, the, the answer is with the community. Because right now, we can, you know, as a council, we can send something to the state legislation and say, you know, can you guys do this? They can, they can say yes or no. Or they can say yes and it'd take another twenty years. Or they can, or they can say no, uh, because they don't have the same type of relationship. They don't. I'm not gonna say all of them, but if they're not, if if our Wilmington delegation doesn't have the support that they need in Dover. Like our state reps and our state senators, tho- those representatives from lower Delaware, they don't always. Realize, you know, what, or they they don't, they're not always willing to see. The trouble that Wilmington is is in. They're not always able to relate to, uh, you know, our, our, our. Our kids in our neighborhoods because they can't see it. So it's hard to ask someone who has no idea. You know, what, you know, what Wilmington is to fix Wilmington. So but the only way, I I believe the only way we fix it is with the community's support. That's, you know, I I know I keep going back to that, but just politically, since I've been involved, you know, on council, like, we've never been able to make some of the changes. That we have been able to make. We've never been able to have some of the conversations that we've had and until our community started to. Organize and rise up and say, okay, and like you said, enough is enough. So, like, politically. I think it would take forever because it has taken forever. But with the community's support and with the community's positive support. I believe that we see changes immediately because that's what's happened. Like, now we're talking about police reform. And now Dover is talk, you know, is passing legislation around police reform. That's only happened within the last few months. And that was a direct result of our community being more engaged. So, like, community engagement is is everything.
Absolutely. I can feel the tide changing.
It has to.
And the other thing, and you mentioned this, um, is, uh, the community. And even people in the state are not aware of the, um. The role and the authority that city council has or doesn't have.
And honestly, I was, I was a part of that population that didn't know before I got in. Like, when I, when I first, when I first ran, I was like, yeah, we're gonna change our schools, we're gonna, we're gonna change our our prison system. Like, I I thought that we could do it through council, but I just thought that council members just hadn't done it. So, you know, I can't, and I didn't realize how the commu- how important the community was. And the community thinks that we can do that. So when they have concerns, they're saying, hey, you know, my 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 son had, you know. X, Y, and Z happened to, happened to him in school today. How can you fix it? We can have that conversation, but and that's the, that's probably the frustrating part, most frustrating part, honestly, about being in government. Is because, you know, we talked about earlier, you know, in my family business, when something isn't right, like, I can fix it immediately. But in government, I can't fix it immediately. Uh, like, I can say, you know, if 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 one of our. Our families is unhappy, I can, I can go in there and I can, I can solve the problem immediately. But here, you know, government doesn't work like that. Unless, you know, I know I keep going back to it, unless the community is right there with us. Because I I I'm telling you, like, the community made some, some immediate impact through those, through organizing. And I, and I, and I hope that, I hope that isn't lost on government. And I hope that especially isn't lost on our community, like, how how vital they are. So, you know, it's been, you know, it, so we do have to educate our community of the, of the role of city council. You know, the role of our state legislators, of the role of the administration. But we also have to educate them on their role and help them, and not really educate them, but help them to see how important their role is.
Yeah, it's an, it's an ongoing thing. Uh, we're in a, we're in a time where major change. Needs to happen. Uh, we should be able to look back at the mistakes that we've made. Same mistakes, um, not make those same mistakes again.
A lot of what happens is that, well, I know that people get into politics for the very same reason I did, because we wanna. Help and we wanna bring about change. But once we're in politics, a lot of times we we get caught up in relationships. And relationships are extremely important because that's how a lot of, you know, that's how a lot of things get done and accomplished, but that can also be a hindrance. Because if you and I are friends and, um. I don't want our relationship to be altered because of legislation. Like, I might not support that legislation if I put your relation, or if I put our relationship before the people. Like, things get, you know, stalled and things don't happen because of relationships. So it's important to have them. But they ca- they cannot be more important than the reasons why we first, you know, even got into politics in the first place. And unfortunately, that's what happens, you know, we we meet, we meet new friends, we become family. And then we ju- we ju- we're scared to offend. We don't wanna offend each other. So we, we, you know, we kinda diminish our response, we we diminish our responsibility, we diminish. Our, 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 um, our power to make change because we put relationships first. And I, and I've never, and I've always been one that has been able to separate that. You know, I love you, but. I'm here for a job and I'm here for, you know, a community, uh, and I and I love this community. And we we can disagree. And afterwards, we can go have dinner, but I'm not, I'm not gonna side with, uh, anyone just because we're friends. I'm not gonna put my relationship with with anyone. I've never done that. And I think that was, that's what people have been able to, um. Appreciate about me because at the end of the day, I've made some great friends on council and I made some great friends in government. But I'm never gonna put those relationships before, uh, the community who I represent.
That's integrity. Integrity. And, um, that's what will win with the people. Um, is integrity. And I love that you were able to, you know, we've made some mistakes. Um, made some mistakes, um, but you know, when we make mistakes. Um, they really pave the path for the future.
We own them, as long as we accept them, and as long as we're ready to move and not hold each other to our mistakes. Like, we're all gonna make mistakes. But don't, you know, don't, don't let our mistakes be a hindrance, uh, to us moving forward.
Right, absolutely. All right, some questions. Um, Trippy is from a family that has always held people in the community. That is so true. That's your foundation.
Yes, yes, it is.
And we do that. I mean, you know, the audience recognizes that. Um. How do people hold the local politicians accountable? Um, for basically doing the right thing? Do they do it at the city council meetings or, you know, um, how do we do that?
Absolutely. Um, and that's, that's something else that I want to be able to, uh, you know, address as as as. As president of Wilmington City Council. There is a dramatic difference on how we legislate and how we vote. If our ch- council chambers are empty versus if our council chambers are full. Because in our minds, nobody is watching. So that if if we, if we vote a certain way, we're not gonna get the kind of backlash because, again, in our minds, nobody is right there. To to tell us how they feel. But one, if that, if that, if those council chambers are full, standing room only. People act totally different. And that's, that's probably true in life. You know, you'll you'll do something if you think nobody is watching. But if you know somebody is watching you, you're gonna, you're gonna act totally different. There's no change and there's no difference in in politics. So I would just encourage people to become more involved. I would encourage people to come to city council meetings and bring your friends, bring your family. Bring your children especially, um, because it's important that children understand politics. But just to come, like, come to meetings and 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 call, you know, your council member and and write to them, but. But the biggest thing is to come to meetings. And if you can't come, like, send somebody in your place. If if you have to work or. For some reason, you just can't make a council meeting, send somebody in your place. And that's where, you know, that's how we hold it, that's how we hold. That's how we're held responsible, is that, you know, we, because because we know that somebody is gonna be watching us and our community is paying attention. And voting, honestly, and and voting. Um, voting is critical. So, uh, you know, I'm thankful for the, for the second district. Um, having a confidence and and a faith in me for, you know, for the last twelve years to have, um, you know, supported me and voted me back into office. Uh, and but that voting is critical. So if a council member isn't, you know, standing, you know, isn't upholding. Uh, the community and isn't upholding what they said they wanna do, it's imperative that we, that we vote them out. Or that we keep them on. If they, if they are doing, you know, things that they say we're gonna do. Um, so voting. But that, again, that's only every four years, but we don't wanna wait until election time. We wanna hold those, we wanna hold, we we need, we need to be held accountable. At every meeting. And the way that we're held accountable is, uh, through the community engaging and being at at those meetings.
Yes, um, another old adage. Um, you need to inspect what you expect.
So true, so true. And and what, I, and I, I just can't, I don't think I can, I don't think I can communicate how important that is. Because I've seen it, like, I've seen it for the, over the last twelve years, how council and government just acts differently when people in the room versus when they're not. It's a totally, totally different atmosphere.
So is there a regular calendar of when, um, city council meets? Um, you know, okay?
Yeah, we have, we have our official county meetings on the first and the third Thursdays of every month. Kind of fluctuates because we have like a, we have a summer break, um, in July, August, but pretty much the first and. Second Thursday of every month, we have a, we have our official council meeting. But then throughout the month, we have our committee meetings, which are also extremely important because that's when, that's where we really discuss and the community has a chance to. Ha- has a chance to give their input at the committee meetings. And those are, uh, there are, you know, five committee meetings, five committees and councils. Uh, so those committees meet every month just to discuss legislation. So, and if, and all of, all of our meetings are always open to the public, they're always televised. Uh, but right now, you know, because of COVID, everything is through Zoom. But, you know, post-COVID, and even now, you can participate through Zoom. But post-COVID, you know, you'd be able to come to the, you know, to our council chambers and be a part of our city council meetings. You can go to our committee meeting room and still be a, you know, a part of discussing legislation that we vote on once we get to our official council meetings. So both, both, again, both are open, both are, um, you know, you're able to participate in both of them. So it's important that, again, if you can't come, like, send somebody on your behalf. Who can, you know, who can, who knows how to, um, and I'll bring up, you know, communicate your, your, uh, your expectations from us on council.
I'm sorry, my internet connection. And that's all right with me. As, as it should be, as it should be. So, um, Trippy, how can we help you? How can we help you now?
Um, voting is is the, is the most important thing that we all can do, that you can, how you, how you can help me. Um, you know, our our primary elections are on September fifteenth, so it's important that you vote. Historically, uh, Wilmington hasn't participated in primary elections the way that we do in November for the general election. So it's just important that that you vote and that you bring your families and your friends and your neighbors. To, along with you, or, you know, make sure that they get to the voting booth. You can, you can vote early through mail-in ballots. Um, but before that, you, you know, if you go to my website at www dot trippycongo dot com. You will see links on how you can volunteer, on, uh, you know, how you can, you know, donate. On how you can request a yard sign. Uh, so there, there are different ways you can participate. You, we know we're gonna start phone banking really soon. Um, uh, and above all that, honestly, just keep me in your prayers and, uh, keep me in your thoughts and. And give me some, some feedback. Like, I'm, I'm okay. Like, I appreciate all the comments and I've seen some of them. But I'm okay with the, you know, with the negative feedback and telling me how, what you think I could do better. I I'm, I'm totally okay with that. And that's important that I be able to accept everything to help me be a better president. Uh, because I I want, I I, both help to shape me. And, and I'm, I'm open for it and I'm, and I wanna be better. So, you know, whatever you have heard or seen through this interview, you can, uh, you know, go to my website and let me know. Like, the good and the bad, and I, and I, and I appreciate both, honestly.
Thank you so very much, Trippy. All right, and don't go away. Everyone, we want to go to www dot trippycongo dot com. It's gonna be posted. Also on, um, on my Facebook page. I have to give a shout out to, um. My, uh, my cohorts at advocacy works, uh, retired Senator Connie Johnson. From the state of Oklahoma, you have a lot of people, okay, in your corner. She's all about bringing out the vote and has shared a lot of that information, um, with us as well. Um, to my friends at Hustle Slay Launch, um, you know, Women's Business Group. Um, they're on here as well, uh, for my friends at Jewel as well. So, we've got a whole bunch of folks. You can go to www dot trippycongo dot com. And even if you're not from the city of Wilmington, you can, you can, um, volunteer. And even if you're not from the city of Wilmington, you can, you can um volunteer to do the phone bank, what I'll be doing. Um you can also donate, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you can make a donation so that you're making a difference, not only in your neck of the woods, okay, but here, we need your support, okay? Uh Trippy Congo needs to be duplicated by the hundreds of thousands.
But thank you. I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, Tanya.
Yes, yes, your level of integrity.
As, as does your, your platform. So like we need more of, of what you're doing, honestly.
Absolutely, positively. Thank you so very much for joining us on Talks with Tanya. To my friends out there, thank you so much for joining me for your comments. And we will be back again, um Talks with Tanya on uh, let's see, on Saturday, September, whatever the sixth, I think it is. But I'll be back on Saturday at eleven AM and also Sundays at eight PM. Uh make sure you stay tuned. Uh oh, Mr. Congo, you were the first gentle gentleman on Talks with Tanya.
Oh, wow, thank you.
Up until today, yes, up until today, you have, what did they use, uh broken this glass ceiling.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, open the glass ceiling for the men. And in September, I have, um I'm continuing, I'm continuing with that theme. So we're gonna have a mix of, of gentlemen that are going to be on sharing um some important information um so that we can be more informed. We can take action and more important than anything, we can be part of the solution. Thank you again. All the best to you, Mr. Congo. To my audience and everyone, remember, stay inspired.
Thank you, everybody.